This conference will now be recorded.
Mort Sullivan and Lauren Vermaat. And we have a forum for us, but I think Lauren's coming and Mort's not here.
She's not here.
If we know is not.
So on the select board side, we're calling to order at 7:02 and we have all three members present here in town. We also have a coordinate planning board. So I think the main gist of this meeting is just to go over some of the recommendations of the master plan that the planning board produced over the past couple of years because many of them call on, you know, further action by the select board or at least, you know, potentially that's a route that we could go. So we have here six or seven pages of the action book, right? And, you know, in each one, there's the responsible parties for each item of which many the select board is a potential responsible party. So I don't know if we should just go down the list and talk if there's any issue, if there's specific ones that the planning board wants to call out that it feels like.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking of starting with housing. It's the last page of recommendations, but I think the planning board discussed it and felt like it was something that we ought to at least touch on. I mean, it's a big, big topic. A lot of people bring it up. It's something that I think is on the
House and City Gold Pod.
Yeah.
Gold Pod.
Gold Pod. It's something that is on the mind, I think, of everybody. Exactly what it means for Monterey is the question. And to me, that kind of leads into the conversation of the Community Preservation Act, the CPA, and discussions on whether that would be something that Monterey has an appetite for or wants to start pursuing because the CPA can provide funding for not just housing, but open space, which is another priority in Monterey. Historical preservation. So I think we can talk about all the recommendations, but I think that talking about the CPA is important to Yeah. And I think it's a long process. It's a big commitment. I think a question in my mind is you've almost got competing interests in the master plan. You've got open space and you've got housing and sometimes people want open space, so want housing and by separation. So what I think somehow plus the CPA is essentially a tax increase depending on how you sell it. It's more money. There's a lot of things in the master plan that take money. So if, if the I don't know if people understand that saying, oh, yes, we want housing. Well, that's going to take some money or we want a path from here to the beach or we want this or that. It takes money and the CPA is a good route to kick off different funding grants and I think ultimately unless you want to stay the same Monterey, which is not a bad thing, people are going to say, well, either we want to stay the same and don't want to pay more money or we need to start moving in the direction of maybe it's CPA, maybe it's hiring a grant writer, maybe it's other things, but CPA is the best route to go. And it starts really a fund that the town owns and gets matched by the state and can be used for multiple.
To touch back a little bit on housing, one thing that we already have is a little bit of money. We have collected money from the Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program. I think we have just about $100,000. And part of my hesitation to go forward with the CPA, for instance, and it's just an initial thing is some of that money is restricted, a certain amount of that money is restricted to being used on housing and similar projects. And I don't even really know where we begin to spend it. Because it's not like we have a housing program and we can just increase what we're doing with it by putting more money into it.
Yep.
So that being said, what kind of, I guess I'm just trying to discern what the commitment would be with housing. The first thing right off the bat that seems like it wouldn't be a huge monetary commitment would be 5.2, which falls under the planning board almost entirely. That seems like the first step where you're not asking for tax money. You don't have to institute a new program. You don't have to find land or convince people. Well, you do have to convince people that changing the zoning bylaws is good, but has the planning board discussed 5.2?
Yeah.
At any length.
We have. I guess the reason in my mind that it's 5.2 is, I mean, we could just fully nearly say, well, we want to reduce the zoning size from two acres to one acre or reduce the frontage, but without really an understanding of the full impact of that, which I don't understand. I mean,
That's a lot of potential.
So I think we all have ideas on housing, which may or may not fit into what an expert, I want to quote expert, hopefully a good expert, might come into Monterey and take a look at how we are currently zoned, what the makeup of the population is, areas that we may have available that are town owned, other factors and weigh that in and give us housing master plan. So that we could set, a recommendation out of that might say, well, if you created a new, right now Monterey is mostly aggras. If we had a targeted district in some area of town that we said was residential, not aggras and made it some other, the requirements for building a lot there are less than two acres and two or three.
But I'm also going to say there are additional options. The only choice is it, it's not just smaller lots with less footage. There's also like, I'm not sure what the current phrase is. I've heard it called smart development, but I've also given it heard it called like five other names, which all may have nuances of meaning that I don't get. But, you know, doing, I call it, heard it called clustered housing. So that you have a larger property with the houses in one area, but it preserves open space and allows joint use of certain facilities.
Like a planned community.
Yes, like a planned community, which has pros and cons. I'm not advocating for it. I'm just putting out there that the choices aren't quarter acre lots or two acre lots. There's a lot of other options. I'm not even sure what they all are or what their options are.
And I'm not sure either, but we have existing houses in town that could be made affordable with seed money. And they could stay affordable if they get past time for the next owner. If they don't capitalize on it. So there are, there are ways that, and the Land Trust did that years ago with some houses. And so I think we need to be educated a little bit on what's out there.
And what options we have. Like I feel like there's more options than just chopping every piece of land into one acre.
Right. I pick on that because that's what I know.
Right? There's no going back. There's no preservation of open space at all when you go that route.
Really? Then you have a rental housing, which is important. And we have to figure out a way that to incentivize people to purchase property for rents.
For long term rentals.
Okay, that's fine.
Do you have short term rentals?
I've been in it for 20 years and it's fine. It gives me income.
Oh, Roger, long term. Come on.
Okay, no, okay, that's okay. But I mean, I think, I think we need to try to incentivize that, that business model of people wanting to, to build equity. And one way you can do it is to rent.
It's tricky too now because I will say that I was just, Melissa just gave me the figure yesterday that the quarterly, we passed a tax on short term rentals, which I'm all in favor of trying to get rid of. But that said, as you know, that said, 30K for the final quarter of last year.
That's what was brought in.
That's what we got from the short term rentals, which tells you something about how much they're charging and how many of them there are.
I'm sure there are plenty that are in town.
That may be true, although it's coming right off the platform. So if there, if the booking is happening from the platform, we're getting it.
So where did that money go? To the housing?
Well, maybe it should. Right now it's just getting put into the, you know, just goes into our general coffers.
So I think that short discussion just leads to, everybody can come up with an idea, whether it's the right idea or the wrong idea. I don't think any of us are really have the full scope to know how all of those make it together. And that's why I think.
So we're one of the only, we're one of the only southern Berkshire towns that is not addressing some kind of workforce housing.
Yeah.
And I think that at the master plan forums, even though it was really interesting, in the survey, it didn't have as high a priority, but in the people that came to the forums, everybody wanted to talk about workforce housing. And there's a difference between workforce and affordable and section eight. But, you know, I think the issue is, I think we have to, we have to start talking about it. And is that, we talked at the last planning board meeting about maybe having a master plan, housing meeting forum, you know, to get people just on that one topic.
Especially if people weren't interested. I mean, I think it would be worth, I don't know what the right way to go about it is, but it sounds like having someone who was, well, I have a better word, specialist in zoning and housing to help us, like, I don't know what the implications, pros and cons of each of the possibilities for changing zoning are. And obviously you don't have to make the choice that you go to quarter acre lots throughout the decade. You can, you can make district. But there are other possibilities. And I'm, it's not clear to me what the pros and cons of each of those things are, what kind of people have tried a lot of them. There may be evidence of, well, if you do this, you're going to get this upside and this downside. This happened here, here, and here. And if you do this, these may be the upsides and downsides and it happened here, here, and here, right? Like there are probably people who know it. It's not me.
Accessory dwelling is something that we've done and the purpose of that was to, to try to provide housing for, you know, caregivers or rent. So I think that's.
I think the only question I have is what land are you going to use to build any of these affordable housing?
I think it almost has to be, you have to orient either the zoning or whatever incentive so that a private person might find it attractive or
Although it's not always the case. And I think Lennox, was it Lennox or Tuckridge? I think it's Lennox actually built two houses. They're just houses on lots. They're like, they didn't change their zoning.
The town, the town building them.
Yeah. And they wrapped, they basically had it in a raffle, what a lottery.
Yeah, that's what a lot of them do.
And surprisingly, I think that second one looked like a really nice house.
What land are you going to put it on?
They went to the older person who played.
Put that in?
I mean, you can have.
Can you imagine?
I don't know what the requirements were.
I think what Roger touched on, you know, zoning, changing the rules and making it some kind of, you know, someone to develop it.
Yeah, you need someone to help.
Yeah.
But then you have to pick your developer. You have to be careful.
But you also have to have somebody who's going to donate their land. Like if somebody has like 30 acres, you have to ask them, will you take, give us 30, you know, two acres, three acres or whatever. I mean, because everyone owns the property. That's my worries. Like where are you going to, where are you putting it?
It's a good question.
I was amazed at the.
What about that parcel that we've talked about?
Right.
Right behind town hall.
Well, Melissa's done a little work. I, she's had the engineer group that supposedly was familiar with the property and they put a couple, a few homes on it, you know, drawings, but then there was a question about the common septic field that it needed. They hadn't come back to her the last time I talked to her. You know, there's been some initial work, but I don't.
It's pretty wet back there and.
It's up on, you know, the top back there.
Right.
Also, remember we had that fellow who was going to purchase a big piece of.
Right up on Brett Road. Somebody came preliminarily and was going to purchase the farm, the long one that's right along Brett Road, like the top of the hill. And they were going to put in, I think that's 100 acres or so with that property. And they had some, some kind of a.
I always get Brett Road, Brace Road backwards. Brett Road is the one that goes, goes.
Brett Road on the other side of.
From Bear Town, towards Bear Town.
Towards one.
Yeah, towards one. Okay.
He was going to do, I forget which, but the.
Development.
The development, the houses were close, but they all had kind of shared open land. So it didn't, it wasn't just dividing up 100 acres into two acre lots.
How long ago was that?
Was that?
How long ago did?
I want to say two years ago.
I was going to ask how many, how many people have applied to do some of that.
And our zoning, I mean, they came to us to say, hey, what would happen if we presented this plan? And our zoning laws just, it just doesn't fit into the way our zoning laws, because you'd have to do almost.
Do we not have a subdivision thing? I thought we did. It's never come before this EBA, so I never had pause to come over it.
We do have a subdivision. I don't know all that much about it because nobody's, in my turn, nobody ever has done it. But you have to, you have to build an access road that meets state requirements. And I mean, it's very expensive even just get to the point where you start in house number one.
Is that land still for sale?
I don't know.
So one other, I always had a planning board meeting where someone came in and was talking about building a bunch of homes up at Mount, at Mount Hunter Road on our own acres.
Yep. Same kind of thing.
Same thing.
They were, I think they were more to a, if I remember right, they were looking more at a subdivision type thing. And again, he was coming in to kind of get the temperature of.
And I think the dollars and cents of the road and everything else was kind of too costly.
Also, the way that I understand it is if your town doesn't provide affordable housing, the state has made it so that, I don't know if you're familiar with this. I think we've talked about it before. A developer can come in and build housing and not follow your town zoning.
Yeah.
So for.
Right. Right. And that's an interesting conversation because developers have not been beating the doors down here to do that. I think the costs of building are very high. And I think they're, they're pushing the pencil on paper and they're saying this isn't, is not making sense. So the laws and the books, the developers know it. I think it's just too costly. I don't think the numbers. So they need to be, there needs to be more incentive for them to do that. And that's what this seed money can do.
What, could you explain a little bit more about what money, how we could use the money? Did you have a, to incentivize long-term rentals? Was there any particular thing you had in mind?
Well, they, 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 they can be subsidized, I guess, by town money at a hundred dollars a month or something on a, on an apartment.
Or maybe a tax.
I mean, it's the, the, the section eight does that. They go to the landlord and they tell them, listen, we have somebody for your house and they're in section eight. So so much of the money comes from there, so much. So it's a subsidized housing.
That the town would be subsidized.
Right.
This, that's a possible.
So this is a list of all the Massachusetts towns that, you know, every town is supposed to have 10% of subsidized housing. And not one of the small ones. Beckett has one house in, out of.
Has a lot to do with the population of those towns, you know?
And, but, you know, like Marlboro doesn't own this. San Diego doesn't.
So they, one thing that we do have that doesn't denote is we do have a valid gap between rent and an affordable price.
Yeah, but I, I.
It's a very affordable.
So this is, I don't know if you all have seen this, but this explains the difference between workforce, affordable and section eight housing. I don't know.
Another possibility.
Well, all I was going to say is the question, when we first started the master plan discussions, we talked about the CPA. We learned a lot about it. So many, you know, towns have it. I've got a list of all the southern.
It turns out a little map.
Beckett, Beckett, Barrington, Lee, Lennox, Stockbridge, West Stockbridge all have it.
Some of it is CPA.
And their tax rates are from one and a half to forty, basically. But, you know, this may not be the best year to try to ask the town to add its money onto their property taxes. So I had one other question. I do not know what other funding mechanism, grant mechanisms besides the CPA are there for housing in Massachusetts? Does anybody know? Where does Construct get all their money from? I think you just have to talk to the housing department.
I mean, I think it's, you know, that's, that's probably need to do a really.
So, you know, because of the CPA, which to me makes sense, but I think asking the residents to approve another one and a half percent after everybody's freaking out about their property tax bills this week. Well, and having just, you know, looked over the budget, the most budget and we're talking about it, last year was there a 1% increase in our operating budget? Now we're talking about a 10% increase in our operating budget this year or so.
And then I think the Lake Shore, I think they're looking into doing the Lake Shore District Tax again. So I mean, that's just a lot.
In addition to.
A Lake Garfield District?
Well, yeah, the lake, yeah. I know that you're going to be bringing that up soon.
Has anybody had a conversation with Construct? Yeah, I believe, well, I know that there was an ongoing conversation because of the school house. And I did ask for an update and Melissa answered that they have been back and forth and that there were additional questions about the septic. So that there was another conversation and, and now we're waiting again. I mean, would Construct be interested in that property behind town hall? I don't know. I don't know that that one was ever discussed with them. You know, if you said, here, here's the land, what, you know, what can we do? I mean, I know you can build something that looks like a house, but that actually has four apartments in it. So it's not, you know, we don't want well houses or an apartment building. But, you know, to me, workforce housing is, is important because how are we going to attract anybody young? And there's not even, you don't even need to have them all the same. You could have one that looks like a house and had four apartments and one that was like, was a house and had two, was two small houses, right? Like, there's a lot of them. And then you could have a freestanding house. They don't have to all be identical units. I did, Susan asked me earlier, CPA money can be used for workforce housing. It doesn't have to be.
Section eight.
So there is a whole.
Housing, right?
Yeah.
So I wonder that we have a lot of questions about housing. So I wonder if some of that, you had mentioned a housing fund that the town currently has that's, I don't know how it's allocated or can be used. I wonder if it makes sense to Dr. Regional Planning or, or others to find out if there's a consultant for a reasonable amount that would come in before just jumping into CPA and talking about tax increases and that kind of thing. If it makes sense to, there's enough, my sense is there's enough interest in town to say, well, let's really find out what that means for Monterey. And then one of the further recommendations might be CPA. It might be, okay, talk to Construct. It might be, who knows what. To, if we've got some of that money, I don't know how.
So that'd be 5.1, hire a consultant. Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, you mentioned that a bunch of the other towns are doing stuff. But like, did they hire someone? Did they just use a citizen committee? Or do you have any idea of what process they used to? And I don't know about Lennox.
For housing?
Yeah, but like Marlboro's got something going on, not the CPA, for the housing itself. To me, that would be obvious thing is somebody needs to talk to every single one of our neighbors and.
Find out what they're doing.
And find out what they're doing. I mean, Beckett has had, in their case, the CPA since 2008.
I wonder if they're actually doing anything with it. Or they're just sitting there at room, which is a terrible thing.
Have they gotten ready for it?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know. And let's, you know, and West Dockridge just passed it, but.
What's the state match for the CPA?
It depends. It's not always, it isn't a hundred, it's not always apple to apple season.
Yeah, it's a grant and they look at the state of the grant every year. And there's a formula. They take 80% and they give it to everybody who's in the CPA. And then they, it says they prioritize smaller towns so that the bigger towns don't get a bigger proportion. And then they give out the rest of the 20% to whatever smaller towns need to.
And so it's not project specific?
No, and you need a committee that kind of oversees that. And once you get your, you have the money that you put in out of your taxes and the money that's matched by the state and the committee. I sent that article.
Yeah, you get a chance.
About Williamstown. They just, there was a nice article in the Eagle today about Williamstown was, had some people apply into their CPA to do different things that they were considering. It's, it's not like a top-down kind of, you shall use it for this. It's, it's, it seems, and I'm not an expert on it, but it seemed like the town has a lot of options when it comes to using it. And that CPA committee is, is believed in helping decide where it goes.
Do we think there are enough interested people in town that if we, if we had a, what did you call it? Some type of meeting, like a, a housing master plan meeting and ask people to come and talk about it, that there would be people who would be interested in stepping up to, to be the leaders and make the phone calls and interview, you know, fight, figure out if it makes sense to hire a consultant and who is out there that would be like, who's worked with other communities to do a good job and.
Yeah, because it would be, it would be a lot of work on that committee. It's not just a.
And I, like, under other circumstances, I'd be right in there, but I feel like I can't wear another hat or like, everything is going to fall apart.
I think probably the ways to move forward on this is the select board in particular to explore a consultant. We have a little bit of money, which just to be transparent with it, only some of that money, about $35,000 is restricted to housing. The other, the rest of the money is unrestricted. So we could buy new chairs for town hall with it. So there's the question of really, should we be spending on housing? On the other hand, it's, you know, it's kind of windfall money. And it was related to the rehab loan. So maybe it does make sense to spend on housing. So maybe the select board can kind of explore the consultant idea and who we can work with, whether it's PRPC or Construct or others. And then the planning board, if it wishes to, could have that public forum and continue discussion on if changing the zoning bylaws would be helpful. But in some way that's probably intertwined because if we get another consultant, they may.
I wouldn't want to jump the gun and if we're going to hire a consultant, we got to hold a little bit and find out what they say.
Yeah.
Before we jump into some of that.
What's that?
Have a consultant at the meeting.
Oh, the public forum?
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's really, it maybe what it's beginning to become apparent, this is kind of beyond all of ours knowledge about what the resources are and how to move forward. And so it really probably does make sense to see if we can get a professional in the line and they will probably guide the process.
And I don't, I think if it were done amongst a small group of us, it would be helpful initially to.
So I, I think this consultant should do some research for the town first before he comes and talks to us to see if it is feasible, right? And not just come to a meeting and say, okay, this is what we can do without knowing if we can actually do it. Because I think there's a lot of people who would move forward, would love all of this, but if we can't do it, you know, it's like a lot of work for nothing. I think it might also be really important to consider what we're asking them to research. If you're getting a consultant, you need to have a clear end goal, right? And are we asking them to tell us what our zoning options are? Are we asking them to tell us what our options are specifically for workforce housing? Or like, what, what is our goal? Do we have this?
I think it's got to be workforce, workforce housing. You know, that's, that's got to be the goal. I guess my sense, I wouldn't, I would say all of the above, but.
Yeah, but I think.
I wouldn't exclude necessarily anything.
Well, I think to accomplish that, you know, he'll say you need to change the zoning.
And maybe the planning board could put together an RFP. If you guys are serious about thinking about using some of that money that's designated for housing to look for a consultant, we could put together an RFP, we consider, what do we want this person to do? What is this going to be? And what do we want? What do we want in that?
Right, because if, you know, when we read the papers, we're seeing projects going on, and they're obviously very complex. So they, that infrastructure out there, I don't know anything about it. I really don't. So I think we really need to find out what programs are available, how they're run, how they're funded.
It's certainly worth at least a few phone calls to like, the people who were involved in the Williamstown project to find out, how did they get it started? Like, what were their first steps, and who did they work with to make it happen? And I'm thinking it's worth a couple of phone calls. I don't know if, I don't think it was Constructed. Was it Construct that did the Lennox one? The guy?
Well, when Construct people wanted to talk to, just because they're so low, I mean, they did, they ran the Cassilis Farm, and they did work there, and then Windrush.
I mean, it's certainly worth talking to, and for one thing, they may know who to tell you to go to, right? They may have worked with the three most common consultants and say, so this guy's great with this, this one's great with that, and stay away from this one because of blah blah, who knows? I'm just making that up completely.
And Seth from the planning commission can give us some pointers, and they may have some people that do that kind of thing also, that have names of different consultants that were in the works.
Right.
Well, we can just say we're serious about approaching the subject in a more concrete way, and we think we need professional help at this point.
I know.
I need professional help more than that, but. Do we have other, I think, I think we're at a decent place in housing. I don't know if there was another topic that you felt like should be up there.
I mean, that was, that was the one that I want to make sure that we talked about first. And then, there's a lot of good stuff, I mean, coming out in these recommendations, there's a lot of good stuff that's kind of ongoing in the town. I'm not exactly sure how much momentum it has, but the Renewable Energy Working Group, Historical Society working with the school, just, there's things going on. We can run through from, from the top down.
Yeah, I think you're right. Just looking through it, there's a number of ongoing efforts that, that this is kind of saying, continue on.
And this is a lot better than what was done in two thousand and three. There was really no action taken on that particular master plan.
I don't know what happened to it after it was done. I wasn't around.
Yeah, I mean, if you, I shouldn't say that. The one thing that did come up, and I don't even know if anybody knew it was in the master plan in two thousand and three, of the cultural committee and the community center, that was all part of trying to get that going in town, which ended up coming together. But some of the same issues that were down here.
I know it's twenty years from now, they say.
Yeah, the same issues, you know, walkways, you know, trails and all that, that was still.
There were common things.
Those folks put it on the shelf too.
Well, I think this is. Sometimes there are reasons for things to be put on the shelf, like, anyone who's actually stood there and looked at the width of the road and the proximity of the buildings to the road knows why there's not a walkway.
Yes.
It's not a magical mystery tour. It's extremely obvious. There's no reason for it. Right? It doesn't, it's not even a question unless we're making an elevated walkway somehow.
I mean, there's no parking, you know?
And there's no place to put cars. By the way, the farmer's market, wouldn't that be something the community could center could just do?
Sure, there was, there was a farmer's market in town for many years, and it stopped.
There may just not have been. So I know that Berkshire. Yeah, which is now kind of Berkshire Brown and Berkshire Valley together are gonna come. I think they're gonna probably go through the pantry, run some ideas by us, but they actually have a truck that they, a mobile truck that they might be able to bring to the community center. They're feeling, I mean, farmers markets are expensive. I mean, you know, you're not gonna get farmers come to a farmer's market without, if there's not gonna be a lot of support, and, you know, so when I talked to Margaret about, you know, farmer's market, she goes, you know, unless they're guaranteed, I mean, they're not gonna stay there for six hours.
With nobody there?
To sell a hundred dollars of something.
I think you have to have enough.
There's gotta be a lot of traffic. And, you know, it's just like the espresso truck, you know, he's getting just enough, but he, you know, he's gotta get at least five hundred dollars.
To make it worth it.
To make it worth it to be.
Yeah, right, five miles down the road at Butterhut or downtown Great Barrington.
A lot more throughput.
So maybe we all say, oh yeah, I'd support a farmer's market, but that number of people, I don't think we have the volume to live to support a variety of farmers.
Yeah, well, I think you have, for homegrown farmer's market, there is, I think there's potential for that.
Yeah, so you have the farm dancing brings, she only has that open, you know, it's not even, not even every Saturday. And then just puts it on the group order, which she has.
And there's one just down there.
And we had tall pine farms by Bob Terry and a woman over the years, and that was very well patronized. So I think if somebody has some land and they wanted to grow vegetables, they'd find their niche on what they sell and everything. So that's the type of farmer's market that you really want.
Or just a farm stand.
A farm stand.
Yeah, because it's, there's less oversight and it becomes known among the community. You know, and the folks that are selling eggs locally.
I know.
You're hard put to be able to get eggs, they're so popular.
So I mean, open space, there's a lot of stuff, good stuff going on with open space. The CPA would support that, but, but the Berkshire.
I have a question. Are there actually technically any town trails other than wherever upon?
So.
They were part of the land trust.
Yeah, so we have a couple different things, which we have the one town trail, but BNRC has trails.
Right, right.
Monterey Preservation Land Trust. I think what this was kind of, the way I understand the open space committee too, which I'm not on, and we have a couple members, maybe you can fill me in. But when I first heard open space committee, I said the town owns such a limited amount of open space, and that's pretty much what the person should do. But what I've been sold on is that the open space committee is kind of also commenting on open spaces that aren't owned by the town.
That's.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that's kind of what's going on.
It's just that when it said town trails, I assumed it was.
Capital T, Monterey Government.
That may have been the.
So except we have Bitterwell Park, and we have, yeah, Bitterwell Run, and that's it.
Town, right. And it might be, like, I doubt that Bitwell would be like, oh no, we don't want the community to help us clean our trails. Like, or BNRC, right? They have trail days and stuff. I'm sure they wouldn't be like, oh no, don't get a group of residents together to help us clean up the bobs, the bobb way. Like, that, that's not a thing that's ever gonna happen.
Laura, do you know does the parks, parks commission do trail maintenance or have a budget?
They're in the process of trying to figure out who's gonna do that.
I mean, that's kind of the, you know, have these nice trails, but every day that goes by, they're gonna take scare of them, they just get.
Yeah, they're trying to see who's gonna do that.
And I think one of the things we talked about in open space was the idea of actually using it as a community building experience. Like, because there are people who like hiking, who, if you made, yeah, if you made a day where the group could come together, and if there's five people, you do one thing, and if there's thirty-five people that turn up, you divide into groups and you go to different sites to deal with different trails. I mean, it would be a way to build connections. You might meet people you didn't know in Monterey, and it might be a really great experience.
The scanning rate, same kind of thing, there are twenty plus people there this spring or this fall, put it together. And I met people there. It was a good time.
If we had an open space plan, which we will, it has to be submitted to the state by the draft. I mean, we won't, there's no way we get any money till twenty twenty-five. But we could get grant money from the state to then pay greenagers to do, you know, you know, we have to, you know, greenagers we can get to do trail maintenance, we just have to pay them. And that would be next year, or two years later, two thousand and seven, two thousand and six. Because they're already putting money in, trying to get money from other committees to take care of that.
The parks, yeah.
Yeah.
So open space, I don't think there's a lot, a lot that needs to be done on open space. There's a lot of initiatives.
CPA is the one big elephant that we want to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, if it makes sense, I tend to agree. It's not the time right now.
It kills me, because I'd really like to see it on.
The sooner you.
CPA.
The sooner you start, it starts, you put that into fund, then it's, when you wanna try and build a new trail, you've got money there.
The more we kick the can down the road, the longer it's gonna take us to make it happen. So if you were to even ask for that to happen, you don't have to have it on the next town meeting.
So the way you do it, you can do a petition, and if you get critical number, you can get it put onto the warrant or the select board can put it on the warrant and bring it to town meeting.
I certainly think there's a lot of putting it in front of it.
Well, the only, the only reservation I would have about CPA, I think it's great that you set aside money for, for community things like trails and, and all the things that I've heard you use for are good things, and you're putting away money every year, and you're bringing a state match to some amount. I'm also looking at this map and seeing that most of the hill towns have not done it, other than maybe Beckett, Grandville in north and south Berkshire County, and you go east of Berkshire County too, and that doesn't mean it's a bad idea. I'm just wondering, like, my one concern for Monterey is, would we have a reliable expense for CPA? Or would it build up and we wouldn't know what to use it for? That would be my one concern, because it seems like if you're Lennox or Barrington, you have parks and cultural attractions all over town, and probably no shortage of CPA requests. In Monterey, you have minimal town parks, which are really pretty well maintained at this point. And then you have some nonprofits that own land throughout town, like Monterey Preservation Land Trust, Bitterwell House. And it's not that they wouldn't want some money, but they do seem to do a pretty good job where they're at. So that would be my one concern is, would we have the projects continuing on forward to the, to spend the CPA?
You know, banking. Is there any money in there?
Why is that?
Are you, are you assured of ideas that you could sell that money on, or?
I, I, there's only, there's the three groups of things, right? There's open space, housing, and historic. And I think the question is like, okay, what are each of those pods? We all know that the housing pod is real. The historic pod is pretty small. The number of actual historic homes is not a large number. And they'll reach a point where they've either been renovated or they're not going to be renovated, for lack of a better way to put it. It's unlikely that that pot's going to get larger. It's not like there's suddenly going to be a lot of additional historic buildings. Am I, I mean, there are some that aren't being.
It could probably fund Bitterwell House stuff, it could probably, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know, right. I think that was the question.
I think there's a pretty broad, it's a pretty, it's not a specific, you have to use it for building affordable housing period.
So it's housing, open space, and historic. So one thing I do kind of take myself is, well, the church.
Yeah.
Church.
The church.
If you wanted to start, if we had done it twenty years ago, we might have a lot of money to say, well, maybe the town should buy the church.
I don't know what we'd do with it, but.
I don't think you lose it. You can keep it in this pot, and who knows what things are gonna, stuff is gonna, the need for money not.
Well, why don't we find out what we can do? We probably even have all these talks about we can't do this and can't do that. What do we do with the money? Let's get somebody in and.
And Laura, I hear where you're coming from, why don't we just put it out there? But I mean, the risk is poisoning the idea of it. If it's not the right time, unless we're really prepared to sell it with project ideas and do it, it's just gonna be a tax hike and people are just.
I think that's what would convince me and probably other people as well, is we want to do CPA, and here are the types of things we could do. You know, a private owner or a nonprofit that owns the church could fix up the church. But concrete examples, not that there's a shortage of them necessarily, but that way you know what the money's going towards, and it's not just abstract.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, I did do a calculation, so an assessed house of a half a million dollars with a one percent CPA surcharge would be seventy-five dollars a year on your taxes. So it's, it's something, but it's not huge, seventy-two, seventy.
With a one percent?
With a one.
And we can go one to three percent?
Throw up a three percent. It's a hundred and fifty. But I, I think, if you guys, talking to the planning board, if you guys think that housing, we had talked about it before, that housing is kind of something we ought to at least be talking about, because it's a long-term kind of thing. I think before we jump into the CPA, which I think probably a consultant is probably gonna spit that back at us. But I think it's a, if there's some money available, we're not, we're not going in front of the town with something that might scare them without the right ammunition. And then we're still doing some, somehow getting an expert to give us input on what housing really means for Monterey. And then maybe, maybe next year we'd be ready, or what have you. That's my, my.
I mean, you can put it out there and hope that the idea sinks in after people have had time to think about it. But sometimes timing matters. Sometimes things have to be in the right moment for people to be positive about it. Also, you know, we could start writing some stuff for the Monterey News to talk about, this is what this is, and this is what it might do for Monterey, and this is what it has done for other communities, and give some context. It's just the beginning of the discussion. It's not gonna be the solution.
Tom, maybe one or two of us from the planning board could call some Beckett, you know, I guess start with the town administrator, call West Stockbridge, which are towns sort of arse size, a little bigger, but not that much bigger. And just ask information about, you know, so maybe another town meeting, and it goes on, or, you know, in, not May, but the next one. But I think we need more information. So what do they use it for? There is a huge list of what, you know, what you can use it for and what you can't use it for. So you cannot use it for trail maintenance.
Okay.
So, but open space money you can use for trail maintenance. This is really for acquisition. This, this whole document, which, you know, I can send everybody the link, just, but it's very concise, explaining all the things in.
For the CPA.
For the CPA. Maybe we don't have enough land that, you know, because you can purchase land, you know, you can.
My, my two cents is that there's enough land preserved in this town between Barrington and conservation restrictions and everything else. But that's just my opinion. I mean, how much of this town can't be built, built on because of a conservation restriction or is owned by Monterey Preservation Land Trust or BNRC or the state.
Barrington State Park.
Yeah, there's a map in the plan that shows, it's a big color area.
You know, so there may not be enough allowable projects in Monterey, because we don't have very many historic buildings. I think they're using CPA funds in Barrington for one of the churches.
They did, yeah.
But.
It was a huge restoration project.
Of the design.
But do we have any historic, we don't have, I mean, this is my, the church.
The church, the school building. The church, the church, the school building.
Yeah.
School building.
But on the map.
The Bigwell House.
Mm-hmm.
There might be a few other buildings that are old enough to qualify, but.
Proppin', seventeen-something, wouldn't that be historic? Yeah?
It might be, although it, the condition, it, like, it having been renovated into condos, condos, it may no longer qualify, I don't know.
Right, that's a good question.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but I mean, it is an older structure, I mean, we're hard to do. Hard to restore, yeah, hard to restore.
Too sorry for hanging us up on CPA too, I didn't know, if you wanna move on too.
Nope.
Yeah.
Uh, environmental resilience, um, supporting the groups that are there, uh, encouraging solar development, which the Energy Working Group is doing a good job with. The Pelvert is ongoing, but are they gonna have more pub, public hearings on, on the Pelvert?
On the MP hearing? Um, I think that we're meeting with, um, GZA, the engineer, and maybe BRC soon. But I think we're also getting to the point where it's, soon it's gonna be, the, the design is final.
Yeah.
And so it's just a matter of if we're building.
There's a time, there's a time, I think by June it's final, it has to be combined.
I think we're almost done with the design phase, and then the next part is the implementation phase, and we've already got, I know that, oh, working on the grant. Dennis, sorry, just have a second, um, is working on the phase three grant. And I think the last part of the plan concerns the fact that there's not really a good detour and how we're going to try to deal with that.
Well, I think that the definition should be that they use the area beside the bridge, but that has to be a design.
It, it, I think so, yeah.
So I believe it is.
To build it one lane at a time?
I think so.
Well, or else they come, hit the one side or the other with the temperature. But they can't have the detour probably.
No, I think, do they build so many bridges one lane at a time?
It just takes a little longer, but if you got the.
It's just part of the plan.
Yeah, I know.
It will cut down on the speed of people coming up, that's for sure.
Yeah, but it'll take longer to do.
It was actually talking about the possibility of a purchase, the town purchasing a bridge, because there's other projects you can use, including the, peristyle, you know, in, in case that it turns out that, well, it's like, but anyway, was it anything?
So are they going to rip part of Lovers Lane, or are they gonna make that bridge into a half a building at a time?
Um, on Purnist? Purnist are making it, they said that it has to be done all at once, because the, the cost would go up too high.
And but there's no, there shouldn't be any tearing up Lovers Lane involved.
And the millings that are down on Lovers Lane may get removed after it's done. You know how there's the pavement millings? And it may go back to gravel. Those aren't necessarily permanent.
Right.
So then the only other thing I have under two that I think is worth mentioning tonight,
Yep.
is the dark sky bylaw. And you have it down for planning board, the select board looked into a little bit, and you can make dark sky bylaws that are, proposed by the planning board as zoning bylaws, or they can be proposed by the select board as general bylaws. I do also remember it got something like in the seventies of support, seventy-something percent of support and vote on the master plan. Is that something that the planning board is planning on tackling, or?
We, we haven't discussed, discussed it past the master plan.
Yeah.
Um, and it, it, it's worth talking, somebody should have a conversation with New Marver and Sandusfield, because they have, you know, I, I think that's simple, pretty easy to do, won't cost any much, or, or anything really, and it can be done quickly and at least, showing that people that we're doing, that, you know, you're taking some action on the master plan recommendations.
It's low hanging fruit.
Yes.
So the question is, is it the planning board's low hanging fruit or the select board's? And maybe we don't decide that tonight, but just so you're aware, it could be either.
And I did reach out to Janet Jensen and to the, I guess, the. Yeah, the, but she's interested in that, but there was a guy she put me in touch with that was the one who drafted the sort of model dark skies bylaw. And my, my thought about it, having like read through and seen a bunch of comments people made on it, is that it's using the nuisance rules to do it. Um, and I was like.
Very ambiguous.
It's not only ambiguous, but it's very hard to, virtually impossible as far as I can see. So that, I mean, they used it because it isn't, there are nuisance laws, but using them is really difficult. And, and I asked him if anybody had used other wording or, and he's like, not that I know of. So I, I'm not sure what to do about that, and maybe the answer is nothing.
And I almost think it would fall under planning board, because I think the planning board is tighter with the building department. And, I, I mean, the lights that are here are here, and I think really, the people that are interested may go out and change their old lights to new lights, but it's really gonna be whatever is built from then on, that you're gonna wanna have somebody looking in to say, hey, you know.
It makes a lot of sense, though.
Well, the marble has a bylaw, it's pretty, uh, informative, it talks about filming, it talks about on, your, your, on municipal buildings, what to do, and it also says that when a new build, new build is coming in, they do that too. And then it's up to, you know, you can't have everyone change light bulbs, you know, as, as, you can't force everybody to change their light bulbs.
But you can put, you can ask people to put up shades around it or whatever, if they're willing, I mean.
Right, but it was a really good file, you know, and it really, um, explained everything, it didn't leave anything out, and it was conducive to, to watch it, you know? You know what I mean, it wasn't like saying.
If you guys wanna go for it, I'm all in favor, I would love to see it.
Yeah, let's see where, how, what, what's on the final list, then.
And, you know, the one thing, you can't force people to change their, their existing, however, we just switched out, we changed all of our exterior, lights to the low Kelvin, you know, we went to the twenty, like, at that presentation.
Yeah.
And to make it warmer versus, but the town we used to live in, Maryland, that you could say, do you need a new, do you want a tree plant? We could get a free Oprah White Bowl planted every year on our property, the town paid for it. But you could also maybe purchase those low Kelvin light bulbs and bulbs exterior, you know, and.
You can offer them.
And, I mean, you could probably get a grant to purchase light bulbs, I mean, to really incentivize people, um, to switch them out.
Do you really? Wow, I, I like, I can't even deal with.
Well, there's, there's like.
You have the low and you have the middle, and, I mean, I don't like the big, white ones, I like the ones you know, because I can't see. So, I mean, if you can't see, you need the light.
I think it's gonna be an issue, I think people, you know, not everybody's made a statement about it.
About the, about the dark skies bylaw? Well, we should, I think it's similar enough to the noise bylaw, that if we're gonna approach it, you should approach it, you should learn, we should learn a lesson from how that worked. Because we don't wanna spend months planning it and then have it shot down and, and.
Right, and then, and there was a reason why you had that, that noise bylaw, because there's other factors with that, but then, you know, when you have townspeople, who, um, feel like there's just, that's like telling them they can't do this, and they can't, can't put your lawnmower on at this time, or you can't do this, I mean, that's hard, because not everybody can mow their lawn at one o'clock, in the morning, or one o'clock in the night.
Well, it doesn't help when someone that drafted it speaks out against it, so.
Oh, I didn't know. Okay. But anyway, I'm just giving an example of, you know, it's hard to break it, it's hard to say to people, you got to do this, all in one shot, and slowly,
Fade it in.
Fade it in so they understand.
But don't forget seventy-five percent that filled out that survey supported doing it. If seventy-five percent would pass it.
You think, I mean, and that's what I'm, yeah, you know what I mean?
But it doesn't necessarily mean that not everyone who goes to town meetings necessarily, the same hundred percent of people who fill out this survey.
It's probably a, almost a, I mean, I think a lot of the people that go, that would fill out the survey are at the town meeting.
I was gonna say, I think a lot of the people I saw at the meetings, the people I see down.
There's a lot, there's a lot of people that would never fill out the survey, but always go to town meeting.
Right, yes.
So one more time.
Okay, that kinda, I think, takes care of, uh, two.
Uh, my, my, I just wanted to point out the, the drainage and stormwater, which I, I think, I get a sense the highway department is always on that, because they get reminded, every once in a while when things wash out, but.
I think more than once.
It, I mean, it's just an obvious problem, happens.
Okay.
We're aware, though, and like the Hugh by Road project.
There's, yeah. Business opportunity, um, it's kind of the same block of housing, it is, is, there's a lot of one-off ideas that people have about the store, about parking, about this and that, but, without, uh, hiring someone with experience in, if we say, we wanna revitalize our downtown, what's the best way about it? Come take a look at what we've got and make some recommendations. I, I think that would be the way to, to approach it, otherwise it's, you've got a lot of opinions and no, no one who has a background in that.
Last question, would the church be considered something like a business if somebody bought that?
Sometimes you buy it, right? It's in the, it's in the zone here, it's in the business.
It's like a good thing.
It's in the business, yeah.
I mean, I think the trickiest thing about those is that you don't see a lot of successfully, um, repurposed church buildings. And it's just the way that the building itself is usually built, it's very hard to use that space for other things.
What if we raise up a store or two?
Make it a floating church?
Or a parking garage.
I was thinking more like a flying church. A flying.
A flying church.
I've never ever seen it in Congress, yeah.
I don't know.
I think people make beautiful homes out of churches and also galleries. There are a number of galleries that have been made out of churches, there's one in, um, there's one in Lee, and there's, there's one.
The one on the, it's not like it, the right by Meadows, where maybe it's.
There's one on twenty-two, one of those towns.
Well, I think the church want, I mean, I guess in a perfect world, it would end up like the New Marver Meeting House, you know, where it's used for concerts and lectures. It's not used as a church, but I think the church wants it to be used if, that they could still have service there on Sundays, you know, um, which, kind of then changes things somewhat around, and I think the repairs are probably as much or more than what they're asking for the.
What are they asking?
I don't, I, nobody.
Well, I heard, I don't, I heard two fifty, I don't know.
Plus the, and the roof needs to be done, and it's sleek.
The roof was a couple hundred thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, I mean, to me, to me, the, the town town needs a critical mass of something to get kicked off, I mean, if a gallery, there, there's no parking for anybody to stop, and, they can't go get a drink, please. It, it doesn't.
And, you know, sitting on the master plan, you know, one day I think. Yeah. That's what parking we need for that.
Yeah, but that'd be a fine problem to have, the five percent.
And nobody, that, on the master plan question, that's like the lowest, nobody wants any more parking downtown, but we have a huge problem.
Well, we only have a problem if there's stuff going on.
Yeah. If you had the general store.
Yeah, right, yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's something he's gonna have to deal with, the select board, you know, there's nothing he can do or say that's.
But if something happens with the church, there's, there's one parking place.
What were they doing with that, just, there's not a lot going on on Sundays, so it was okay? I mean, I don't even know how they solved it as a what.
Well, at the church, man? Yeah, I mean, there's quite, even a lot of cars parked there.
Okay.
And rather than park across in front of the gym.
Well, they park in the library, right?
Right, or they probably park in this line, it's just a little bit more of a lot.
Right.
Use the post office on Sunday, you know, parking. I mean, there's never one, plenty of people here, there you go.
I don't think we should worry too much about parking, just because before the library was redone, there were only one or two parking spots in the library, so we've added, if anything, ten, or more parking spots, and the store was open back then. So, I mean, it used to be messy, but the police officer would be down here on Saturday.
Yeah, no, it works out fine. It works out fine, if you go to Providence now, I mean, it's, you know, it's, that's what, that's what center town would like, it's all.
Close to the door, so it's, it's a good church by parking.
I think purchasing this, this house next door, if we could make a parking lot there, would be a great idea, that would be.
Is it, is it for sale?
Well, it would be someday, I suppose.
No, I was, I was thinking. Which house?
I'm not sure, though.
Sure, I, I.
Just, do towns ever go, I mean, properties go into foreclosure, this town, does that happen?
We had one, but then it's foreclosure, a tax title.
Or whatever, when they don't pay their taxes.
Yeah, yeah, they, some properties go into tax title.
And then what happens? What does the town do with it?
You can do different things with it, so the person can buy it back, or we can sell it, or the town can own it, that's how I have a plan.
There haven't been a lot of them, and the ones that there have, as, as I understand it, besides the one that we actually ended up, they bought it back, um, that happened on our watch, the other ones were all like, very small awkward pieces, and there's a reason nobody wanted to use them or, right? And you can't even sell them, because they're not, no one wants them. Here, have this tiny unbuildable lot that will never per.
Goal four, right?
The emergency services that they have.
The complete streets, I, I mean, there were, there were a lot of, there was a lot of talk about bike lanes, walking paths, uh, just the ability to walk anywhere. So I, I guess, to me, that might be another area, and, as I drive along the road, I'm, I'm the opposite way, well, I could make a little path there, I'm, I'm, Roger could bring his tractor, just grade a little bit in, and maybe the right way, shift the road a little over a little bit, would they pave it next time? And, um, I mean, I see what they did in Great Barrington here, we're never gonna get something that looks like that.
We don't have that kind of space, no.
But could we get a line, uh, two feet of pavement instead of a line and three inches of pavement? So if you're on a bike, you don't go crashing into the woods when you.
I don't know, I mean, can you fit, can you fit the house, the, the building and the car, and a walkway, and two lanes, and space for a car on the other side? I, I don't know, I, I think the conclusion most people have drawn over time has been, no. Are we talking for a stretch of road?
Or just all roads are mine?
I, I guess a lot of people brought up from the beach to downtown, I mean, if there was something downtown to walk to. A lot of people brought up, I mean, people attempt to bike Route twenty-three, because they wanna go somewhere, and I've done it, and it, it's, it's scary, because.
There's a lot of places it's scary.
You have, if there's two cars coming and you gotta be on the side of the road, you, you ready to just.
I don't think you can do it, I read something, I guess it was on the two thousand and three, um, master plan, that it wasn't feasible, because of space.
I, I'd like to see a report that somebody did, or, or hire someone to relook at it, and, I mean, that may be the case. It just seems like enough interest was there that it might be worth a few dollars to have an expert look and say, well, there's sections you might be able to do, or just forget it, or, I, I think the focus would be downtown twenty-three, and from twenty-three to the beach, and.
It seemed like twenty-three to the beach was the big one, I, I think we'd be better off trying to find a way to make a trail that wasn't on the road, because that section from, Main Street, the scariest section is right by, you know, the alley tops, right at the beginning, and, you're in a canyon, there, there isn't, there's nothing you can do about it. I think that the safest thing would be to try to put a trail light back through, it might involve right of ways.
Would the trions allow a sidewalk going up through and back, I, probably nobody has asked.
There's a business back there, though, like, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know the answer. Yeah, I I I don't know the answer.
There's a lot, there's a lot of like
other people.
Of town ran, there are a lot of homeowners that have have pushed out the stone walls on town.
Yeah, I I don't know the answer, so to me, it was a.
The right of ways are there.
What's the what town?
The 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 right of ways are there. They're just they're they're just inaccessible by the town.
Yeah, if you said, we're gonna put our blinders on and do eminent domain and take that forty Roz Road and push, blow it through.
No, you don't have to take it. It had 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 the town already owns it.
Uh yeah, true.
It's just that when it wasn't used, people
Put their laws out there.
Put uh wanted to expand their laws out in the road, so it's it's town owned land, they haven't given it up.
But there's some sections, and even so, would be tricky, where the, on the east side of the road where the hill comes down, right? So then you say, well, okay, go on the west side of the road, but then it drops off like that, and you're talking about maybe making a raised roadway or trying to sneak it in by narrowing the road, which already isn't super wide in that one section. I just, I you're right, we could have a specialist. I'm not a specialist, I'm just saying, my husband is an avid biker, and I think about the width of the road all the time because I'm thinking about him out there. And and I, you know, and he tells me of all the places that are kind of scary and I drive around and see them, and I just think from a functional standpoint, I mean, I have a pretty good eye for distances and stuff, I think it's harder than people would like to believe it is. And I think the cost of actually doing that is a lot higher than people think, but no one's gonna take my word for it. If the town wants, is really enthusiastic about it, then we need to find someone that's a specialist in it to give us, you know, an estimate of what, like, three options for how you could do it. I I personally think we'd be better off trying to see if we could even, it's a possibility to make a trail that's not right on the road, but.
Right, but but when our roads are renovated in town, I know there are some real problem areas that got a few of the stone walls, it's gonna be hard, but I mean, when the when the town roads are renovated, going up to the lake and stuff in a lot of places, the cost of um of a of a couple more of feet of blacktop.
Yeah, I I was disappointed when Route twenty-three was redone, that it was still only six inches on the other side of the line because it that there's shoulder there, I don't know what the regulations are.
Were you thinking about like in Barrington?
No. When we had twenty-three, we had to do it on race, then put another foot of blacktop on either side. That would, that would at least give you enough room to navigate.
For bikes anyway.
Because we're, because we don't need a lot more to stabilize, but I mean, a foot on each side.
And wouldn't it be official bike lane? Probably not, but at least we'd let the rider.
We'd let people ride there, yeah.
Um so I, that that's one that I I think I would be willing to stand up in front of town meeting and say, I think we should raise uh and appropriate whatever it takes, if we if we did an RFP and that this is what we want out of a transportation study, but.
And in some places, the the uh the road is already kind of built, it's just that they have a blacktop out there, so they're riding on cinders or whatever and they can't ride a bicycle on this, so it's really, in some places, it's just putting a cap on it.
On what exists already?
On what exists.
Maybe it takes less space than I think. I I can't rule it out, but what's the pool money? How much money would we need to to pay someone to make the assessment?
I don't know, but it's probably twenty thousand dollars.
Really? You think it's that little?
For a consultant, yeah.
Yeah, not to do it.
Yeah, to do it, depends on what they recommend.
Or what, yeah, what.
But you really don't know until you.
There's gotta be someone that knows that, that does it places, right?
Know feasibility. I'm sure it is, and there's grants for it and.
So did you mention it with Seth at one point, the complete streets grant?
Yeah, that's one of the, that's one of the um opportunities for funding.
But I thought, I'm trying to remember what happened, I thought shortly after the master plan was being finalized back in May, we were talking about a complete streets grant.
Uh we talked about it as if that was one of the things coming out, we could do that as a
Okay.
the first step, because because that they would start with a consultant coming out and looking at the road.
And VRPC has done this with other towns, yeah. I I know Seth did mention that at one point.
And it's gonna be hard for us to get, like, I think complete streets has different levels of designation, and it would be impossible for us to do everything, because that's making every walkways and streets accessible to pedestrians, to people with disabilities and you know, like bikes and stuff like that. But I think, you know, it's worth looking at. Now, I don't know whether, you know, I don't know what, how the whole grant thing works, but I mean, because you, we start with asking somebody at Seth or somebody, you know, if we wanna pursue it, what's the first step? And or do we see if there are grants or a consultant to?
I I think going going to the VRPC would would open that door to who what and where why.
There's also land, um but it would not, it would only be a walking path, but we talked about this, um Susan and I would go somebody from Perchier Natural Resources, this, they own that Swan Dunlap property, which is, you know, by the old firehouse across from the community center. It's actually sick at six acres. But I I asked the question, this is what the property looks like.
I mean, between the house and the.
Between Kevin's house and the old firehouse, but it's six acres, and um I know that Paul uses goes, walks all the way to the lake, and I was saying, who lives, who's between the back of this property and the lake? You know, could you do, I mean, if that was important.
That's multiple pri- private properties.
Somebody said they thought it was only one.
Yeah, thought it was only one.
To go from his backyard, well, your home, through a lot of people.
It depends if you're going straight through, I mean, you could go different ways, but.
I don't know how he goes, but he said, I'll take you on a walk.
But there's a, so um Eaton Road comes across there, I mean, you can't, yeah, you can't just.
It's not going to like garden, is he talking about like, yeah, yeah.
You, if you go on Google Maps and zoom in, it'll, the property lines start to show up when you're close enough in and then you'll see.
I think that would be like, I'm not saying you couldn't walk to the lake from there, but it'd be like saying, you could go to my house and you could walk that, you could walk from my house to the lake, you could.
Okay.
Through other people's private property.
It's one of the.
You give them up your private property?
But this is really sort of think of center, I said, it's only six acres, they don't really care about it, they they kind of, instead of the camp wants wants it for something, we would not have a problem letting the camp have it or it is.
Who's listening?
Uh, the NRC.
Oh, oh.
So it it's tiny.
It's a nice uh park-like setting, how prescient we want. So.
And I think Paul at, and maybe Paul's put benches up there and chairs and, but I I guarantee nobody.
Classic animals.
Well, it's kind of hard to ask for the parking. Well, it's kind of, isn't there like a hill and a wall there that, how do you get up there?
Well, there's an opening right by the side.
Yeah, by across from where you go to New Marlboro, or else you can get up through there, because there's a little bit of a tree there.
Oh, okay.
So then.
Kevin planted trees on his.
But it's not, that's the thing, it's private, people have been maintaining, but it's not their land.
Right.
Welcome to a small town.
This map, this town moderate master plan with the, with all the state protected land, trust land, municipal protected land, and private protected land tells me that there's enough protected land, I'm right?
But it's it's a priority?
It's a colorful map. No, it's a good, it's a great thing. Oh, no, it's a great thing that so much of the land in Monterey is protected.
And there's plenty of.
But I just don't think it's a, it's a priority to do more. It's a colorful map. No, it's good. I love all the, you know, different trails and I'm sorry, and the Mount Hunger Trail.
And that then, um you know, the Land Trust, Mount Hunger Trail is now turned over to Perchier Natural Resources, and they're gonna have trails, so that's gonna become probably seventeen hundred acres that they control all the way.
Ridge on it, is that, did I get that right?
Huh?
I'll look at my notes here. I think they're gonna rename that whole, the whole combined area, the Kanga Bot Ridge.
It's called the Kanga Bot Ridge. Yeah. It's a pretty um trail.
On Sot Ridge Reserve.
Uh the other thing on number four is the town hall uh improvements, is that on the Blackboard Radar or probably on Capitol Plan something?
Two dollars. Yeah, that's, oh, the county.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what was downstairs? Is that it?
No, that was the town administration office.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the radar.
It's on the radar.
We just have a lot of partial poll, so. Yeah, it's one of the kind of good fun. Yeah. So so that brings us back to housing, so what what we have as far as actions uh that I broke down, um so you guys are gonna, the subcommittee's gonna look at or talk about funding maybe to use as a for housing, for a consultant, for a consultant. And the planning board is gonna start looking at an RFP as to what they might, what the scope of what they would do would be. And and I would talk to regional planning also, because they, I I'm sure they may have templates or copies of people who have done the same kind of thing, that's their job. Uh we look at uh whether dark sky zoning bylaw uh fit in at this point. And um also talk to VRPC, get some ideas about complete street. What does that mean? How do you go about finding out what that means, starting that process or get a consultant?
That'd be awesome. Not to bring up yet another topic, but the trail and story problem, is that something you wanna bring up in this one?
Um, that's well, the map, the the open space, there'll be a survey that goes live noon on Monday. Um, it's much shorter than the others, the master plan survey. And but there is a question, you know, what what things we, I I can't bring it up, I'm I was gonna bring it up, I have the question sorted, but one of the things is would you be willing to volunteer this or donate this or do this? You know, one thing Open Space wants to do is maybe create a trail guide like that, like the New Marlboro Trail Guide. And Rob Hoops is very interested in that, um but um, you know, I I know they are, Bidwell already has their trails, they have a guide for their own trails for Bidwell Park, I mean, yeah, Bidwell House. Um, so that's one thing, I, you know, we want, I would be curious in the survey if anybody is interested in volunteering to to make a trail guide. But I don't think that really has anything to do with the planning board.
It kind of doesn't, I I think it would be the OSU.
The trustees have the the um the trails online.
If you want to know. If you, if you've ever seen the New Marlboro thing, it includes trustees, the reservation property, and a bunch of others, and it's got like historic information and points of note, as well as the trail itself, and just it's kind of a I'm not gonna call it comprehensive, because I don't know if that exists, but has a lot of, it's a, it's but it would be awesome to have it.
Will it also include all the trails in there?
That's actually.
I wonder if you add up all of our miles of trails in Monterey between Barrington and the NRC, how many miles of the bylaw?
That's a safe project, so we're gonna put, we're gonna put all the doesn't need, you know, historical pieces in there and.
I mean, even if you left Barrington out, since they have their own, it's still good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, this study is important for the trails to be wide enough so that we can, we can put the little trees. I think it's silly, the things that we're gonna go up through, chainsaw, remove.
But this was, we, this was just talking about having a guide to the existing trails, not making other trails. Right, yeah.
But the one thing about having a written, a physical one, is that when we were in New Marlboro, we went to one to do a hike, and there were options, ambulances, somebody had an ATV accident, so we couldn't go. So we go, okay, well, we're already over here, where are we gonna go? Well, there's no Wi-Fi. So like, because we had a trail guide, we just flipped it open and said, oh, yeah, we'll go half a mile on North Road and go here. So.
They were sound, they were in the town too.
And it was nice because it had pictures, it had the history of the property.
Well, that's like a whole nother planning board.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't mean like planning board to do it, but I'm just saying, it's a comprehensive project.
I think Rob would love to do it all the way, whether anybody turns in Barack.
Yeah.
But I think it would be cool to have the opportunity to solicit interest because it's a project big enough, you might want more than one person working on it, so they did it later.
And then they had a grant from the Chris Tana Heritage, whatever it's called, that paid for.
Yeah, there's plenty of that.
I I I was gonna change the subject if if we're done discussing, so uh the next thing we wanna talk about is you have your rumors, there's a uh special town meeting potentially coming up. Is there a date?
We have, we don't have a heartbeat yet, but I think we're talking at the very end of February, January, March.
So I think we were talking about the twenty, it was either the twenty, the twenty seven?
Yeah.
The last Saturday in February was probably.
Yeah, the twenty seven. Oh, no, that's January, sorry, twenty four.
At one thirty, and that's a run.
Yeah, and we do.
And is that what, where the solar?
Yeah, that's where it's headed. So we put the advertise advertising, the first ad was in the Eagle today, so. So we should have plenty of time to to have that approved, to be on that warrant.
Great.
The other thing that we might need to put on the warrant, since you're having another meeting, is our advertising costs have I don't think exceed our budget.
Yeah, I I'm not opposed to putting on a warrant, it's also like, if we weren't having a special community, we would just deal with it with the reserve fund.
Well, however that's handled, we're gonna be over, because I know Hume is gonna be submitting their uh site plan review
Oh, really?
um sometime in February, so we'll have to have another
What's talking about?
A another um posting at that point.
Just out of curiosity, why don't the fees cover the advertising?
They probably should.
Yes, I think they should, so maybe you need to.
We can discuss that.
Yeah. Because I think if someone is submitting a plan and the plan has to be advertised and we're to get their plan, they should be paying for the advertising, the town should be paying for it.
Yeah, the the fees for all the, I think CBA saying is pretty random, I think.
I think they were set and you just have to periodically up to deal with the cost of advertising, and it it's expensive in Eagle now.
And what, what is our budget or how much?
I think it costs eight, that this last posting, which was big, was eight hundred dollars per per uh time in the Eagle, but it was a zoning bylaw, so it was a lot.
So it really comes down to like a display, doesn't it? But it has, it goes with all the certain signs.
So uh well, I'm letting you know, it's gonna be over our budget for advertising, so we need to cover it, whether it's on the warrant or somewhere else.
I thought I already saw on finance committee, reserve fund, transfer.
Not that I request, but maybe Melissa did.
You don't have any finance committee ever, Sarah?
No, I think I saw.
Melissa, Melissa did the last posting, and she may have done that, just.
It's such small, really, in the grand scheme, that.
Okay, I I just didn't want to get caught in the cogs.
Yeah. But thank you for letting it to our attention.
And thank you for getting that, like, the zoning thing for this all going, so we can put on that.
Well, I felt bad about not getting it into the, in time for the last time. Close, but not. That that's all that I had on my agenda, did you have any more on yours?
Just wanna say thank you for all the work that the planning board put into the master plan over over, what was it, almost two years?
A year. Well, I mean, yeah, I guess.
From the beginning.
A year and a half.
Fifteen months.
Yeah.
When you were beginning the RFP got the grant, so thank you, and I think that there's, I really like the the five goals that you made there, I think that's gonna be helpful and. I think that's gonna be helpful and and we'll see what we can do concretely, but I think there's some good ideas. Thank you.
And the goals thing is really helpful, because it gives you kind of clear.
I don't have a reasonable report.
No, but also it's like having a list, right?
Well, right, yes.
It's like a punch list, instead of like the whole background, the background is useful. But in the end, it's the punch list, you're doing a quick reference to like, okay, what were the other things that we actually had to do? Yeah.
Well, the RPC was huge help.
I have everything else, thank you.
Got adjourned or what?
I'm 32.
8:33. You got two clocks, you don't know what time it is.
Lauren, you're behind.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Me and adjourn, 8:32.